I am back in the hot seat this weekend going forward. I was so grateful to have Robert Battles, my producer and a guest host, fill in for me. Last week I was off at Columbia University, attending the graduations for my two daughters, but it's good to be back and joining you, particularly in hour two, because one of my good friends, Dr. David Icard, is going to be here. As we try to make sense of this new report that's out that says that one in three Americans, one in three say that black people aren't better off because of integration, say that even though Brown v. Board of Education decided 70 years ago was supposed to desegregate schools. Some studies say that schools are as segregated today as they were prior to Brown. And a lot of folks say that, so what? We had whatever level of desegregation that did occur, whatever level of integration occurred with black and white students, that black folks are not better off. Today, about half of black adults favor letting children attend neighborhood schools, even if it means most students would be of the same race, which given the way housing patterns are in this country, it absolutely positively means that if you go to your neighborhood school, chances are you're going to go to an all-black school or an all-white school, because our neighborhoods are as segregated today as they have been in decades gone by. Now, white Americans also sometimes hold conflicting views. So according to a study, nine in 10 whites say they support the Brown decision, and nearly two in three say more needs to be done to integrate schools throughout the nation. But nonetheless, large segments of the white population oppose strategies that would help make that integration a reality. Nearly eight in 10 whites say it's better for children to go to neighborhood schools over diversifying them. So there's a lot of conflicting information in these polls, because on one hand, white folks are saying, yes, they believe that integration is important and that schools should be integrated. But on the other hand, they say that kids should go to school in their own neighborhoods, recognizing that if you keep kids in their same neighborhoods, they are likely to go to all or single race schools, all black or all white. Now, the Brown decision, you know, really spoke to this ideal notion, this ideal notion that we were going to somehow be integrated, that blacks and whites, if they went to school together, that it would also cause there to be integration in housing and parity and equity in the workplace. And we know that most of those notions, most of those concepts have not been realized in this country to date. So Dr. Icard is going to help us make sense of this Brown decision issued 70 years ago. On Friday, it was the 70th anniversary. And we talked fondly about Brown v. Board of Education. And in law school, when you take a constitutional law class, you spend a lot of time on Brown v. Board of Education. President Biden marked the anniversary of the Brown decision last Thursday. He had a meeting with some of the surviving plaintiffs, those individuals who were actually a part of the lawsuit and their families. The lawsuits are about five lawsuits that got consolidated into the Brown v. Board decision or to that case. And then on Friday, Biden addressed the NAACP at the National Museum of African American History and Culture in Washington, marking again this milestone. So there's lots of celebrations happening on Thursday and Friday to celebrate the anniversary of Brown v. Board of Education. But the reality of where we are in this country after Brown is pretty dismal. And Dr. Icard is going to help us find some hope in some of these startling statistics. I want to read something of Professor Icard that's written in a Washington Post article about the decision. It says, "The Brown decision was deeply polarizing with massive resistance in the segregated South, where federal troops were at times required to escort black students into what had been all-white schools and violence in the North too, as some white parents angrily protested busing orders that federal courts began issuing in the 1970s. Shortly after the 1954 ruling, a Gallup poll found 55% of Americans approved of Brown, while 40% disapproved. But it succeeded in diversifying schools with segregation rates falling through the 1970s and 80s. Integration peaked around 1988, then courts began lifting their orders and segregation began to rise again. Majority of Americans wrongly believed that schools are less racially segregated today than 30 years ago. A post-Ipsos poll finds, in fact, by multiple measures, schools are more segregated today than they were 30 years ago." That is a startling statistic and reality. Professor Icard, help us understand, how can it be that schools, public schools, are more segregated today than they were 30 years ago?
Well, first of all, let me thank you again for welcoming me back to the show. It's always a pleasure to dig into these really, really pressing questions of the day that affect all Americans, right? We talk about these as black issues, but these are American issues, right? First and foremost, the initial case in terms of the Brown case was really about making good on the initial promise of the Jim Crow system, right? And the Jim Crow system was based on this idea of separate but equal, right? So the idea was somehow, okay, people can be in separate schools, but still in separate spaces and different water fountains and bathrooms, but they still have equality. What actually came to pass in reality was something dramatically different, which is to say, as we all know, the Jim Crow system, black people had inferior schools, had inferior facilities, people were actually rendered as second-class citizens in those particular spaces. And so when that original case was coming out of actual South Carolina, the idea was to hold the feet to the fire of that Jim Crow system and actually have those schools funded, right? Have those resources equally distributed to the black students. Well, what ultimately ended up happening was desegregation got shot down by the Supreme Court. Of course, it was argued famously by Thurgood Marshall. What happened next, though, shocked both Thurgood Marshall and also Derrick Bell, right? Who also worked on the case. For those of who don't know Derrick Bell, who's author of Critical Race Theory. And they thought this was going to be such a landmark case, because it was going to force society to be equal, black people were going to have access to all these resources, including universities that were white only, only to find out, as Derrick Bell actually wrote in his book, and I'm blanking on the name of this book, you'll probably remember it, Ariva, but in this book, he talked about the failure of the actual Brown legislation, because they didn't anticipate how crafty the states would be in denying full access to those black students. And so what happened, some states, like I think it was either Mississippi, Louisiana, shut down the public schools, created a fund with state monies to send to the white students to these schools. So for at least, I think it was two or three years, black students in those states could not even have access to public education, right? And they kept doing these types of jujitsu dynamics within the legal system. So it took, in some cases, almost another decade and a half before states like Mississippi and Louisiana actually desegregated. And then by the time that it, right, it came to them being desegregated, when they realized that that dynamic was inevitable, you had an explosion of private schools. Many of these schools were also funded by state monies. Right now, to this day, we actually have more private schools. People don't realize, we actually have more private schools in America than we do public schools, and by a large number. And all of that can be traced to the Brown decision, and particularly about a little over a decade afterwards, where it became inevitable that we were going to have a desegregated society.
So Professor Icard, obviously, you just mentioned two of the brightest legal minds, you know, in our, you know, recent history, our memory, probably the greatest legal minds ever when you talk about African Americans, Derrick Bell and Justice Thurgood Marshall, who was, you know, before a justice was actually head of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. So these were smart, smart people. Derrick Bell was Professor Hurd for many years. Yes, I think his book you're talking about is Race, Racism, and American Law. Did they not make the association between schools and housing? Because the reason busing that needed to take place in the South and in the North was because to integrate the schools meant we had to somehow mix the kids in different neighborhoods, because all the black people lived in one neighborhood and all the white people lived in a different neighborhood. And if they went to their neighborhood schools, by definition, those neighborhood schools would have a single race of students at them. So in order to get blacks and whites to go to school together, you had to bus either the white kids to the black neighborhoods or the black kids to the white neighborhood. But was there any thought given by any of these leaders at the time about the fact that the neighborhoods were as segregated as the schools? And just by putting a kid on a bus to leave from one part of town to get to the other part of town was, in the long run, not likely to be an effective method of integration, because the neighborhoods were so segregated. Can you recall, I mean, you're a history professor, do you know if that part of the conversation was, you know, was a focus on that?
That we have to remember, right, that white supremacy has been baked into this system, right? So even as you had that ruling, and even as, again, like I said, it took over a decade for most of these states to actually adapt this type of desegregation. And by then, a lot of these private schools had been firmly, you know, ensconced into the, informed into the system, right? But the thing that happened in the actual implementation of it, right? There's one thing to have the laws and all the pressure, but when you actually implement it, what did that actually look like? Well, what it looked like was they shut down most of the black schools, right? Forcing the black students to go to their white schools. And that's crucial, because you didn't have white students that were somehow going to these black schools. First and foremost, that wasn't going to happen in that era. You were not going to have white kids that were going to go to majority-black schools, because they were black. Also, the buildings, the resources also were clearly very inferior. So the implementation of the desegregation always already created the combustible, right, situation that meant that the dynamic of desegregation was always wrought with conflicts and racial tension, right? So much so that you had, like, you know, states in Louisiana, Mississippi that literally said, like, we'll succeed from the Union. Like, you're going to have to come down here with military forces. If you expect, I mean, we know Ruby Bridges, right, Little Rock Nine, we know the whole, the stories, right? Where literally you had to bring in federal forces to make these states desegregate their schools, right? And again, in some of these cases, that was over a decade after the Brown decision.
I guess, understanding that, and again, understanding the white supremacy, and you know, the fact that you just said that white students are not going to come into black neighborhoods and black schools. Still, I guess I'm just trying to understand, were the leaders in that moment, those legal minds, those sociologists, those educators, did they anticipate that we would be where we are today, where schools are as segregated today as they were 30 years ago, because our housing was segregated? At the time that they're trying to enforce the Brown decision, you had black neighborhoods, you had white neighborhoods. And just like you said, white families weren't going to send their kids to black schools, white families did not want black families living in their neighborhoods. Because one way you could integrate the schools is if we had integrated communities. So if I didn't live in an all-black neighborhood, if I lived in an integrated community, that school in the neighborhood would by definition be integrated. So I'm just trying to understand the thinking, you know, was this outside the realm of the thinking of those thought leaders and those, you know, folks who were moving the civil rights agenda at that time? I mean, there was a lot to do, right? There was housing discrimination, there was employment discrimination, there's, I mean, there was, you named it, it was there. So I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I mean, back to one of your mentors, right, Derrick Bell. When he writes in his book on the Brown decision, he talks about how, at that moment where they won the decision, there was widespread celebration. There was widespread excitement, because they thought, hey, this went all the way to the Supreme Court, this is now the law of the land, individual states cannot, like, deny people access to these schools, because it's now federal law. And so Derrick Bell was like, we thought this was going to be a radically socially transformative, like, decision, and this was going to change everything. And then he writes that he didn't anticipate how absolutely cynical, cruel, and manipulative these states and state government, and even federal governments were, so that it quickly became apparent that a lot of these states were not going to, they were not going to desegregate their schools, they were not going to desegregate dynamics of housing, they were not going to immediately get rid of the Jim Crow-like dynamics. And I think black people have historically been optimistic, even when we haven't had a whole lot of reason to be optimistic. And when you start talking about housing, you have to remember that the reason why we needed an actual federal housing legislation was because even when the federal government interceded to start giving these, like, these 30-year fixed loans that most people use today to buy houses, even when those acts were passed, so that people could access those funds and that the regular person could actually buy a house, right? Because prior to that, only really wealthy and well-to-do people could buy houses, because a bank was only going to loan you money for a couple of years, right? So when the federal government intervened, and they actually, like, backed up these loans, so that people could actually take out these longer-term loans, people started, the average person actually had access to the housing. But what happened was a lot of these states implemented additional laws to make it difficult for black people to access those funds, dividing up various areas by these kind of color codes that put black people in areas that were undesirable. And if you were in an undesirable area, you could not get a federal housing loan. And if you moved into one of these white neighborhoods, right? You were literally harassed, in some cases, people were killed and run out of these neighborhoods, right? Ta-Nehisi Coates wrote famously about this dynamic of housing. So the housing and the schooling were intimately entwined in that way. And I think, again, people like Derrick Bell, one of the greatest minds, right, legal minds of 21st century, you know, were very optimistic. They thought this actually legal dynamic was going to have a seismic change. In fact, it proved not to be nearly as significant as he had initially hoped.
When we come forward, Dr. Icard, I want to talk about this contradiction. White Americans who say they believe that integration is important, but who are adamantly opposed to integration when it comes to housing, such as low-income housing or even affordable housing being built in their neighborhoods. What does this mean for the prospect of ever having an integrated public school system? So Dr. Icard, help us understand, again, when you talk about desegregating schools, we've already talked about the fact that housing still remained very segregated in this country and still does today. But the fact that one in three black people say that, didn't help me at all. Why do you think that is?
Well, you have to remember that, I mean, one of the reasons we call that desegregation dynamic that happened in the 1930s redlining is because when the federal government trying to help basically white families in the 1930s, coming out of the Great Depression, who were defaulting on their loans, and they created basically this called Homeowners Loan Corporation. And this group of people went around to these various neighborhoods, and they created this color coding. And the color coding was designed to label whether or not these areas were credit-worthy, right? Whether or not the federal government should back up anybody who's in these areas, who gets a loan, right? And green was the best, purple was still good, yellow was, what was it? Definitely needs help. And then red was hazardous, do not fund, right? And guess where most black people lived, right? And so what happened is, like, being black and being in these areas meant that literally you were living in the worst condition, the worst housing, and those areas were not going to be funded. So when a black person tried to move into a white area, because the literal federal government had conflated being black in terms of housing as actually risking, right? Downgrading an area to the point in which they would not get federal funding for their loans, it literally made it so that black people were actually a liability in these neighborhoods in terms of the quality of life and the ability to be able to get these loans. That's why we have this saying, like, there goes the neighborhood, right? Black people come into the neighborhood, they get conflated with lowering the values and the prices, because it was literally baked into the federal government, right? So the same government, right, that supposedly shot down segregation, was also the ones that created these systems to ensure white privilege, right? And that, as we've seen today, right? There was a recent case in which a black family had valued their home at, I think, $600,000 or $700,000. The bank comes, they were getting a refinance or something on the loan, the bank comes and says, no, it's only worth $400,000 or $500,000. And then they had them come back and have one of their white friends actually represent themselves as the owner, and the value of it went up a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? Now, this happened recently. So we see that this dynamic of redlining, this dynamic of depreciation, depreciation, creating the value of the homes is still very much the case today. Even when you sell a home, right, and I've sold four homes, realtor, an actual real realtor will tell you, take down anything that marks you culturally as black, any pictures of your family, maybe you got black art, take those things down off your wall, because they actually lower the value and the price of your property. I mean, this is in the 21st century. So if that's still the thinking, that's still the dynamic that we're dealing with today, we see how it's like part of the, right, the thinking in these types of neighborhoods, types of neighborhoods right outside of Nashville and Nolan Field, where we have one of the highest, like, incomes in terms of household incomes in the state. And it is very difficult to get any type of affordable housing in this area, because it gets met with a lot of resistance, because even though they won't say black, or they won't say brown, they'll say, well, it's going to bring an element into the community. It's going to, it's going to bring down our housing values, right? It's going to make our, it's going to increase crime, it's going, right? All of these elements, right? We can take that right back to the 1930s, the redlining dynamic that where black people are literally embodied as a hazard, both in terms of the social dynamic, but also in terms of the values of your home and your property. So this, again, like I said, it is literally baked into the system. And what we know too about black professionals is that even though you might have a black person and a white person that makes the same amount of money, black people tend to live in neighborhoods that are at least two tiers below where they are financially. White people tend to live in neighborhoods that are at least two tiers higher than they are financially. And why that matters is because when those fundings are, when those schools are allocated in terms of funding, it's usually based on zip code and property taxes. So of course, the more expensive neighborhoods have the better schools. And if you're a black person, you got a PhD, whatever, but you're living in a lower economic neighborhood, your child is likely to go to a school that's going to be underfunded and have a whole lot more problems.
So Dr. Icard, some of the plaintiffs in the Brown v. Board of Education, it was a consolidation of about five lawsuits, many of the plaintiffs did not want segregated, they didn't want to desegregate the public schools. They wanted the same level of resources that were being poured into white schools to be poured into black schools. When we think about, again, Derrick Bell, Thurgood Marshall, all of these legal minds, was that ever, was that the position that they adopted? Were they also arguing for equity in terms of resources, or were they pushing this notion that we needed to integrate the schools?
Well, you have to remember that a lot of these schools, particularly black schools, one of the advantages to these black schools that, A, they were in the various neighborhoods. So, you know, people didn't have to go great distances to go to those schools. You remember this was an agrarian society. So a lot of times, the kids had to work in the fields and whatever in order to, like, you know, help the household financially. So having a school in your neighborhood was crucial to the financial economic makeup of that community, right? Because young, a lot of young people had to work, right, in the field. The second major component to that was that they were black teachers, they were black students that were taught by black students. What we even know statistically today is that black teachers tend to push students to be excellent, have higher expectations on their students, including their white students. And it has a dramatic effect and impact on their academic success, right? We know, I mean, that's the stats that tell us today. So what we saw then, in this particular case, was you had a lot of folks who were saying, including people like Derrick Bell, who were saying that, look, this separate but equal doctrine was based on people having equal resources. And what we're asking, at the very least, is that you need to fund our schools the way you fund the white schools. You need to give us access to these federal and state resources, like you give white people the funding for their housing, for their schools, right? That was actually the primary push in that regard. So there was not really this idea, because people are smart, they understood that sending their kids to a school with majority-white kids was going to be an issue, right? But again, white kids were not going to be bused or not going to go to these black schools, it just wasn't going to happen, right? It didn't happen ever in any cases.
I'm trying to understand, is it the belief that the Supreme Court got to the, you know, integration piece or the desegregate schools as a way to deny black schools the economic resources? Like, I'm not going to give you any money over here to bring this school up to par, up to par, but I will let this black kid over here get on a bus and go over to this white school. I'm just trying to understand if the push from the plaintiffs was about not desegregating, but about giving us economic parity, economic resources, how do we get from that? Because that could have been a ruling by the Supreme Court, that school districts that fund these schools at a different level, they do so in unconstitutional fashion, and that all schools have to bring into parity, you know, funding for schools. That could have been one of the ways the Supreme Court approached this. When we come forward, I want to, you know, get you to respond to that, because I'm grappling with, you know, how do we get here? Because obviously, it has not worked in a way that anyone, I think, expected or hoped that it would work. And as we move forward, what does that tell us about any kind of notion of the courts trying to force integration? Dr. Icard, given that we are not, that we haven't made a lot of progress with this, you know, desegregation, and that black folks don't seem to care that much about it anyhow, where do we go? How do we move forward? And you mentioned that there are more private schools now than public schools. Should we have a focus and an energy on trying to desegregate public schools, or should we just acknowledge that, you know, it is what it is? And just try to get black students in the best private schools that they can get into? Should we be pushing for school vouchers? We know that Republicans are big on school vouchers and giving parents federal dollars so they can go into private schools. It just begs the question to me as to where we should be as a community on this issue of education.
Man, that's a hard question. That's a big one, right?
It is.
Right. You always bring so much intensity with these questions, right? I mean, we could certainly, I mean, I think-
I only ask the hard questions to my smartest guests.
Well, I'll take that.
Only to my smartest guests.
Absolutely. I think first and foremost, desegregation- I think first and foremost, uh, desegregation as a philosophy, um, does not work. Because it's based on things that are sociologically proven to be inaccurate. Which is, this kind of idea is, it, that if you put different kinds of folks in the same room, in the same classroom, it will result in community bonding and what have you. That's just not what, what bears out in the stats. What we find is that, in fact, in some of the most desegregated schools, most diverse schools, um, the racism, uh, by whites is actually the highest. Right? So in other words, putting, putting bodies in similar spaces um, does not, uh, result in, you know, this kind of kumbaya bonding. Beverly Tate wrote a book about that, Why, Why All the White Kids Sit Together in the Cafeteria, or something like that. Uh, where she tracks this particular kind of dynamic of segregationist thinking, right? So because our culture is still very much grounded in white supremacy. Right? And white supremacy is grounded in, as Toni Morrison would say, the not me and the not free. Right? So in other words, being black, embodying black is the opposite of success, is the opposite of access, is the opposite of intellectual and ethical. Right? That's baked into the DNA of our culture. And so just putting bodies in classrooms doesn't actually penetrate or explode those internalized cultural dynamics. Now, to the question of like, well, what do we do about that? I think that's a, that's a much harder question. I think if we were, if this voucher system was designed, that with, with kind of black people in mind, which we know that it is not, that would not be a, a, a bad option for us. But here's how a lot of these voucher systems are designed, right? Let's say you get a voucher in a particular area and the, and the school that you get the voucher in is 15, 18 miles away. Well, if you, socially, economically, if you have a car and the flexibility in your job, it's no big deal for you to drive your child, right, to that school when there's going to be no access to busing, no pu- public transportation, right? So you can just put your child in the car and drive them to school and pick them up. If you are African-American, black, right? You don't have the same kind of access to public transportation, same kind of access to cars and, and, and the like, that becomes a significant burden for you. A burden that actually makes it so that your child can't attend that school. Right? In that way. So by, by having those kind of elements as part of the dynamic of those vouchers, it actually, um, hides the ways in which those vouchers actually discriminate based on class and race. Right? So that if it was a voucher system in which people could get their, because busing for black people is crucial. Right? Because it allows your child to get to school, back and forth to school, without you actually having to take the expense or the time in order to do that. Whereas for white, white kids, it's not as crucial. And so those are the types of things that are problems with, with vouchers. And also those vouchers in a lot of states, they, they don't just create the, um, the economic dynamic for these people, these kids to go to these private schools. They take that money, right? Those vouchers come from taking that money from the public schools and weakening the public schools. Right? So it, it would, it would, it would be the case that the vouchers, which disproportionately are privileging white people, that would disproportionately advantage the white middle class and educated, are actually depleting the public schools, which the majority of black people go to. So it becomes a trick bag. I mean, and, and part of the, the challenge is that a lot of these, um, these schooling systems, these voucher, voucher systems actually are controlled by people who have a deep and abiding investment in actually sending their kids to mostly or all-white schools. Right? So if we were actually talking about a situation where people were truly, genuinely concerned with raising the level of education, you're having a different conversation. Right? As I think for black people, you know, and again, you know, for somebody like myself, somebody like yourself, these kind of dynamics in terms of the cars and access or whatever become less of an issue. But for the majority of black people, it is a major issue. And so many of us, because of these, these particular kinds of systems, will get left behind. Right? So I, I don't
Yeah, so David Banks, go ahead.
No, what you gonna say?
I was just saying, David Banks, you know, he's the chancellor of the New York City Schools, which is the largest school district in the country. Uh, pretty much agrees with you, that just putting a black person in a chair next to a white person is not going to help that black person. Uh, he believes that black kids need to go to schools, uh, where they are, in their neighborhoods. But they need more funding directed to those schools. The high-poverty schools, serving students of colors, and more opportunities for advanced placement courses, et cetera. Uh, but we know that school funding is, you know, driven by your community. So, you know, you're taxed as a resident of a city. And if you live in a high-income neighborhood of that city, your school generally is going to get more funding, more resources. And not to mention how parents come in and play a role, right? So the affluent parents, if the school doesn't have, you know, a computer lab, they just pull all their resources and buy a computer lab.
Right.
So what the school board doesn't do, they fundraise and do that. So I, that sounds good in theory, just put more money into poverty-stricken schools. But we've been trying that for a while too, and that hasn't worked out too well.
Well, I think part of the problem is that we pathologize our children and we pathologize, right, the curriculum. And so, um, W.E.B. the Boyz said famously, and so's the black folks. He says, the, the unasked question that, that when white people are thinking about black people and, and these types of issues, he said, the unasked question is, how does it feel to be a problem? Right? How does it? And I think when we come at these issues with this kind of deficit thinking, where somehow our kids don't have the capacity to learn, or our kids are not interested in education, or our kids, we need some kind of special hand-holding in order to, uh, be successful. It actually belies the reality. The reality that i- is that black kids perform at a very high level primarily when there are black teachers in, right, in the classroom. But what we know is that there's a small percentage of black teachers in the classroom. We're talking about five, what, five to seven percent? So the majority of these, these students are going to be taught by white teachers, right? And the, what we see in these school districts is whatever, when we have this kind of, this racial disparity where the, the people who are running the schools, the principals, the teacher are white, black students are punished at a higher rate. They're given in-school suspension. They, they, the, the expectations, uh, for their academic excellence is lowered. Um, they're discouraged a lot of times from taking advanced classes, so on and so forth. So when you create a pathologizing system
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Icard, we are out of time. Yeah, this is such a big issue, and you're right, I did ask you this giant, huge, difficult question. And, you know, being the brilliant, being the brilliant professor that you are, you have been answering it. But I've got to have you back. We've got to continue this conversation because it's such an interesting conversation. Because a lot of parents are sitting at home figuring out, you know, what to do. And we're going to be voting this year in a presidential election. And this issue of school vouchers and school choice is on the ballot. But we are out of time. Thank you so much, Dr. Icard. I will definitely have you back for us to continue this conversation.